Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, standing for the Mayor of the City of Clarence, councillor Braden Blomberg.
Well, hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Wurundjeri people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, the land, and the waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors. Ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council meeting of Monday, the 26th of May 2025. This meeting has been broadcast live on YouTube. What is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. Item number two, apologies. I just note that councillor Goine's been in contact. She'll be here for later arrival, but other than that, we have a full house. I expect councillor Goine to join us within the next 10 to 15 minutes. Item number three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associate. Are there any declarations to be made this evening? Councillor Walker?
8.4.3.
Thank you. Any other interests? There being none, we move now on to a procedural motion to introduce an urgent item. I would like to advise the meeting that an urgent item will be introduced to the closed meeting section of the agenda to deal with a property matter, as was discussed during our agenda briefing on Friday. Now we head into our omnibus items. 4.1, confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 5th of May 2025 have been circulated. Are there any matters arising? There being none, we move on to mayor's communications. Colleagues, on last Tuesday, the 20th of May, along with councillor Hunter, councillor Goine, councillor Kennedy, and the deputy mayor, as well as councillor Chong, I attended our 2025 Citizen of the Year Awards. It was a powerful and uplifting event, a true celebration of community, compassion, and commitment. Each year, these awards remind us of the remarkable people who quietly and consistently go above and beyond to make life better for others. This year's recipients, indeed all nominees, exemplified the very best of Clarence. This year, we were proud to present Joint Citizens of the Year Awards to Amanda Steele and Ryan Wiggins, two individuals whose contributions reflect the diversity of service in our city. Amanda is a dedicated community champion. Over the past year, she has led donation drives to the winter appeal, helped Tassie mums collect over 1,000 coats for women and children, and coordinated food and gift donations for vulnerable families at Christmas. All while being a full-time carer, a single mum, and grandmother, Amanda's energy, empathy, and impact are quite extraordinary. Ryan is an inspiring young man who, following a spinal injury in 2021, has become a passionate advocate for people with disabilities. Despite the challenges of quadriplegia, he has raised awareness and funds through initiatives like the RW11 Spinal Swing Golf Day and the paralysis round in the Tasmanian State League. Ryan's determination and courage set a shining example for us all. We also recognise Graham Rainbird as Senior Citizen of the Year for his 26 years of dedicated service leading the Bell Reef Bluff Land Care and Coast Care Group. Graham's work has left a lasting legacy for both the environment and our community. Melody Ruth Escor, a Young Citizen of the Year, has shown deep compassion and initiative in supporting vulnerable Tasmanians, volunteering through programmes like Dying with Friends and leading school-based charity efforts. The award for Community Event or Organisation of the Year went to the Salvation Army Clarence City for their Christmas brunch, a volunteer-led event that, heading into its 10th year, brings connection and comfort to many during the holiday season. We are also pleased to present a highly commended Citizen of the Year Award to Stephen Burke. Stephen is well-known to many of us. He is a creative and dedicated road safety volunteer at Bayview Secondary College. Through colour, costume, and character, he has made crossing the road safer and more joyful for both students and drivers alike. Thank you to everyone who made this memorable event possible, from the Honours and Awards Working Group and council staff to those who submitted nominations. And I'd also particularly like to acknowledge councillor Kennedy for her contribution, and councillor Humes as members of that working group. So to all our nominees and recipients, thank you for everything that you do. Your work enriches our city and strengthens our shared sense of community. Colleagues, I also want to share a quick update from Emma Churchill, team leader at Business and Employment South East Tasmania, following the Clarence Jobs and Training Expo held on the 2nd of April at Ninja Stadium in Bell Reef. Emma emailed to extend her thanks to Clarence City Council for our vetted support of the event. In particular, our contribution to the venue hire, which along with funding from Jobs Tasmania, helped make the event possible. The expo attracted 141 attendees, including local job seekers, students from Clarence and Surell High Schools, and other community members. It was a really hands-on opportunity for young people to engage with potential career pathways and better understand what employers are looking for. Emma highlighted that feedback about Clarence High students was particularly positive. Employers were impressed by how confidently the students introduced themselves, asked thoughtful questions, and genuinely engaged with the stalls. Some employers even contacted the school directly to share this praise. In total, 28 stall holders participated, representing a wide range of industries and training providers. The event also delivered some tangible employment outcomes. Thirty-four resumes were handed in, 11 interviews were booked on the spot, and employers including Banjo's Rosney, Tasmania Police, Harrow Plumbing, and the ADF reported strong engagement, with some making job offers on the day or shortly thereafter. Feedback from attendees was equally encouraging. One student said, "I now know what my dreams are." Another asked if the event would be running again on the weekend. Many commented on how valuable it was to speak directly with employers, a refreshing alternative to the often impersonal online equipment process. Emma finishes her email by saying, "Thank you again for your support. We're proud to have partnered with Clarence City Council to deliver such a meaningful and successful event in your municipality." I thank Emma for her email, and we look forward to working with Business and Employment South East Tasmania again in the future. Also, last week I attended, or I had the pleasure of attending SERTA's, the South East Regional Development Association's Strategic Planning Workshop, a valuable opportunity to come together with regional partners to consider how we can collectively shape the future of our region. The day was facilitated by KPMG, with discussion focused on strengthening our collaborative efforts across councils to drive regional economic development. We reflected on SERTA's achievements to date and explored the unique challenges and opportunities that lie ahead to our communities. A key part of the day involved refining our shared vision, mission, and objectives as a coalition of councils. We also heard from urban economist Terry Rawnsley, who provided valuable insights into the current economic outlook for our region. Building on this, we undertook a robust process to identify common priorities and potential initiatives that could deliver tangible outcomes across the region. Clarence has a strong role to play in this collaboration with Surell, Tasman and Glamorga Spring Bay councils. Our voice, our ideas, our local projects are an integral part of a broader regional effort to foster lasting and inclusive economic growth. I look forward to bringing back further updates as the strategic plan is finalised and regional initiatives begin to take shape. Moving on to 4.2.4, the mayor's diary entries. They've been circulated from the 6th of May through to the 26th of May. My diary entries, I'd also like to thank councillor Jay Darko for representing me at those two events listed as well. So thank you councillor Darko. 4.3, council workshops, as listed in the agenda. 4.4, tabling of petitions. CEO, are there any petitions tonight?
Thank you, mayor. No, there are no petitions.
Thank you, CEO. Reports from outside bodies, rather. Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority, councillor Walker, anything to report here, please?
Nothing to report here. I might have something to report in closed items.
Thank you. Testway South, councillor Warren?
Testway South, councillor Warren.
Thank you. And there's nothing to report for either Test Water or the Greater Hobart Committee. Reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. I note that the minutes from the Community Wellbeing Advisory Committee meeting are tabled. They're in the agenda. Are there any other reports for tabling? Councillor Chong, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've tabled the minutes of the Richmond Advisory Committee for the 19th of March.
Thank you. There being no other minutes to table or reports, move on to 4.6, the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 5th and the 12th of May have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I refer to the project of state significance, Quarry Point Stadium Consultation.
So this is the weekly briefing report of the 5th of May, page 21?
Correct.
Thank you.
The, it's interesting because the Tasmanian government initiated the consultation with a draft IAR, and this report was a culmination of work undertaken by the panel of delegates of the Tasmanian Planning Commission. Council submitted its own comments in relation to this. Amongst those things was the stadium's impact on traffic, accessibility, and transportation networks within the Greater Hobart Region. What's interesting in this report, by way of response, the final, sorry, the finalized assessment guidelines identified this.
Councillor James, sorry, you have to ask a question. This is question time. It's not reading a report time. So what's your question, please?
Well, the question is, there seems to be some conflict in relation to what council provided in that particular consultation process, and then the draft IAR was critical of the information that was provided to address this criteria.
Again, councillor James, you're reading the report. What's the question, please?
Well, it seems to be that there isn't going to be a follow-up, because in the report, it does say...
Councillor James, please don't read from the report. The first paragraph says, "Council is not proposing to provide a response to this section of the consultation." So I think that's your answer.
No, it's not.
So you've put your question then.
The question is, why doesn't council make a further response to this? Because it was identified by the assessment that council made some legitimate issues in relation to the accessibility and traffic and so on. But in this report, by the Head of Strategic Development Communication Engagement, it said there is no need to make a response. And the reason for non-response to the current consultation is that council had already made its comments in relation to the first submission, and therefore there was no need to go ahead with it.
So councillor James, again, what is your question, please?
The question is, we should be making a follow-up.
Well, that's not a question. That's a comment.
Okay. Thank you. It just seems to me it's a lost opportunity.
Put your question, councillor James.
Well, the question is, Mr. Mayor, that why are we not following up with a response to the consultation process when in fact it was identified as being legitimate matters in relation to accessibility?
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor James, please take a seat. Before I call the general manager, sorry, the CEO, page 2 of this memo, page 22 of the weekly briefing reports, outlines the three reasons why there's a non-response to the current consultation. One is a comprehensive early submission. Two is there's no new information. As three is efficiency and consistency. CEO, do you wish to add anything else to that, please?
No, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? There being none, we move now on to, well, I note that we're at the end of our omnibus items. Can I please have a mover? Thank you councillor Warren. Councillor Chong seconded. I'll put those, all those in favour. Thank you. That's unanimous. Moving on, colleagues. Moving now on to public question time. 5.1, I know, public questions, I notice, I know that the Mr Chris Boron and Mr Bradley Walker existed in the agenda. CEO, could you please provide questions, sorry, answers to those questions, I notice. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. The first question is from Mr Boron of Harrow, and his question is, why is there no speed limit for the Wentworth Sports Ground Road Network where pedestrians compete with speeding motor vehicles? A sensible speed limit sign, brackets, road safety strategy, closed brackets, needs to be installed at the entrance to the road network off Clarence Street, Harrow. The answer to that question is as follows. As previously outlined to Mr Boron on multiple occasions through various communication channels, the current layout of the Wentworth Park Sports Ground Car Park does not meet the requirements of a shared zone as set out in the Ostroads Guidelines or the Australian Standards. No speed limit signage is proposed to be installed, and all drivers are expected to drive to the conditions appropriate for a busy car park. Council has a strategic project to develop the Wentworth Park Master Plan, aimed at enhancing the livability of the area through urban design initiatives. Connectivity to and through the sports ground will be considered as a part of that project, and may include recommendations regarding future traffic management and signage changes within the Sports Ground Car Park. The next two questions are from Mr Walker of Harrow, and the first question is as follows. Does council currently own or use a drone and/or use this drone to monitor property compliance matters? The answer to that question is that council does not own a drone. Council has occasionally engaged a third party to provide drone footage for various council matters, which may include evidence gathering for compliance. The second question is as follows. As with many Clarence City councils' information and forms, the application for assessed disclosure form used for people's rights under the Right to Information Act 2009 isn't currently accessible to view, download, or use as it is on almost all other government division websites. Can council please include this form in its forms page, or better still, add an online submittal form such as the one used to submit this question? The answer to that question is, council has made its right to information form available to many, to any individual upon request. However, we've reviewed this process and will be updating our website to host an online RTI form. The online form will sit under the governance section of our website, as well as being included in our list of forms. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, CEO. Moving now on to 5.4, questions, that notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? There being none. We move on to item 6, deputations by members of the public. Are there any deputations, CEO?
Thank you, mayor. No.
No deputations tonight. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number 7, which is planning authority matters. There are none this evening, although I am reliably informed that there will be a number at our next meeting. So thank you, Mr Ma. Moving on to item number 8, Report of Officers. 8.1, there are no, nothing there. Moving through to 8.4, which is a quarterly report to the 31st of March 2025. That's been circulated under separate cover. I'll ask there be mover of the quarterly report, please? Move councillor Hunter, seconded councillor Chong. Councillor Hunter, do you wish to speak to this?
Just to say to staff once again, thank you for a thorough and comprehensive document. And for all those interested in the community, I suggest you have a look on the website.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Councillor Chong?
Echo, councillor 102.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to speak to councillor Darko? No, councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On page 12 of the weekly briefing report, the Begonia Street Works. Have we decided to promote this particular infrastructure works, given over the years it has been highly sought after by the community, and now that it's complete, it's a magnificent job? And is there going to be any circulation to the public that this work has been completed at long last?
Councillor James, you may have received a copy of the May edition of the Essentia Sun, where it's a feature article in that local publication. Welcome councillor Goine. Thank you. Please, please join us. There was a media release put out as well, and there was also extensive Facebook communication throughout the city by Miss Wicks and her team. So it certainly has been communicated. I know the local groups that I'm a part of very appreciate you. You're right, it's something that's been highly sought after and indeed highly valued now by the community. So thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, two more, thanks.
Oh, sorry. Miss Wicks, anything that you'd like to add to that? Sorry, councillor James.
Really, ma'am. Um, in terms of...
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Wicks. Councillor James?
Page 23, the South East Regional Park Master Plan. I thought it was one of our priorities, that we would be considering that in the 25, 26. But in the actual submission on page 23, it's on hold, and site investigations to commence in mid-2025, subject to funding. Could I seek clarification in relation to that? Because that decision of council, and I moved it back in 2018, that we establish a South East Regional Park, and it seems as though it's going to be on hold.
Thank you, councillor James. CEO, please.
Thank you. Mr Graham may wish to add something to the response. As I recall, the original motion was to locate, find a location. At the time, we were unable to do that. We now believe we have a location, once we have a land transfer in the Bayview High School area, the old highway corridor. And once that transfer has occurred, in the current financial year, we will start to move through that process of site investigation moving forward.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor James?
On page 63, it refers to the Develop a Pipe Clay Lagoon Coastal Management Plan. And it's off-track, is the little notation on the side. The draft plan has been prepared and requires further review. So perhaps some explanation as to why it's off-track.
Thank you, councillor James. Mr Graham, are you able to shed any light on this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As is noted there, we've received the draft plan. We've just undertaken, I had an independent peer review of that, and just very recently sent the results of that to the CEO. I'll be further in meeting with the CEO for councillors to be informed through a weekly briefing report on its status and moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
On page 86, it refers to the council's allowances and entitlements from 1 January to the 31st of March. For that period, it's $413,277.24. Is there a comparable figure to that same period last financial year of a value up to and including or less than $413,277.24? And the second part of the question is, is it intended that, given that there may be a movement upwards, that council may have to increase those allowances, subject to, of course, a review of that in the budget?
Councillor James, thank you for your question. As you're aware, under the, well, every year it increases. So clearly there'd be an increase year on year. So that happens across the state for the different categories. The categorisation of councils are publicly available, as are the rules pertaining to, albeit you correctly point out, there is a review at the moment on foot, and that's something that the Minister for Local Government is undertaking. So the short answer is that every year you're going to see an increase, because the, it increases every year as per CPI, et cetera. And the format of it's used is readily available on the DPAC, Department of Premier and Cabinet's website. So, thank you.
The first part of the question was, what was the value to the same period last time?
Well, we can take it on notice, come back to you, but it's available in last year's quarterly report at this time. So we'll get that, we'll get that to you, councillor James, but clearly every year this increases. All right. Any other questions, colleagues, on the quarterly report? There being none. Thank you. Councillor Hunter, write a reply? All right, thank you. I'll put the motion, that is, that the quarterly report to 31 March 2025 be accepted. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you, colleagues. Moving now on to 8.4.2, the Druthy Peninsula Structure Plan, Community Engagement. Good timing, councillor Mulder. Is there a mover for this, for this recommendation, please? Councillor James, thank you. And seconded by councillor Hunter, thank you. Right, councillor James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And look, I think it's fairly straightforward. There has been an indication from one of the, what they call the shareholders in this particular case, to be included specifically within this consultation programme. But look, I think this covers most of those issues, including that particular organisation. So I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Hunter, please. Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Hunter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank the staff for providing in detail the community consultation and promotion plan with not only ourselves, but with the community as part of the agenda. So thank you to the staff. And also to Realm for the work that they've obviously been doing. And I know that there has been some warranted back and forth between the staff and the consultant. Rightly so, in my view, to make sure there's adequate factual information provided to the community when we get to this stage of consultation, which is where we are now. Councillors would know, I did raise some questions with the staff at the agenda briefing, which was really around, were some of the demographic questions going to be optional or mandatory? And they are optional, which is great, because being mandatory, that can put some members of the community off straight away, although it is beneficial for staff when they are analysing the results to ensure there was wide consultation and having better information about who participated. The second question was whether the key stakeholders and groups will be notified when the consultation does go live. And the answer was yes, which is great. And third was around timing, which is not yet defined, which is understandable as all the messaging and materials, project information is yet to be developed. That does take some time. However, my concern was that winter is approaching and being southern Tasmania, a large proportion of the population goes away during the school holiday period. So ideally, we will avoid school holidays, if at all possible, because this is a contentious issue in the community raised in the last round of consultation. And I just want to ensure, as I'm sure most of my colleagues do, that we get the consultation right this time. We don't want it to be the one thing that the community comes back to us about, when we can easily try to avoid that risk. I will foreshadow, depending what the timing is looking like when the collateral has been developed, maybe pushing out the timeframe for consultation if, if it does overlap too extensively into the school holidays. But that's for a future meeting, depending on what comes. But I think it's a very clear warranted activity and promotion plan that has been put together. I think the information that does go out will be quite consistent and well articulated, which is fabulous. So I look forward to that time occurring and to seeing what results come from the community.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I concur with councillor Hunter's comments, very well put together. Thank the staff for the work that's been done to get the proposal to this stage. I would just like to suggest, if it's agreeable to the mover and the seconder, that in table A, under, for example, where we've got the consultation methods under the government heading, we have a dot point at the very bottom that says, check that we have accurately captured their input to the project to date in terms of getting it right. I'd like to suggest that that dot point be replicated under the community groups and other interested groups point, so that those groups actually are able to get feedback from the consultation process to be comfortable that, that their feedback has actually been accurately reflected, we talk about getting it right. I think that would be very helpful. I understand that that's agreeable to the council staff. So I would just, my contribution is to just see that additional dot point replicated under community groups and other interest groups, so that they are able to get that comfort of knowing that their feedback has been captured accurately. And otherwise support the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had an opportunity to discuss this earlier time with the CEO and Ms Wicks, and that, that's entirely doable. So we'll make that change, and I assume councillor James, councillor Hunter, you're comfortable with that? I beg your pardon? Well, that's what I'm doing now. That's, that's what I'm doing now. Yeah, yeah, great, thank you. So that's what we were doing, councillor James, but thank you for the, thank you for the prompt. All right, so with that change, we'll include that, check that we've accurately captured their input to the project to date under both the community groups and other interest groups categories. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hume, please.
Mayor, look, a very brief contribution, first of all, to say, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the, the consultation process as it's outlined, and, and I'll certainly be doing my best to promote that consultation and make sure that, you know, as many interested residents and ratepayers and, and community groups engage with it as, as possible. Because, you know, it, it'll be good to, to see that when we adopt the final structure plan, that, that it's something that really is owned, felt, felt by the community to be owned by them. But I just wanted to comment on, in terms of the structure plan, there are a number of changes around technical issues. But one of the things that really pleases me is that the, the urban design elements of that plan or, or of the original master plan, which I have spoken about many times in this chamber and, and advocated for and said, you know, this, this is a good new approach to urban design that is going to improve livability. And despite those technical amendments, I think those elements are still there. The, you know, the, the, the large amounts of public open space, the, the dense walkable neighbourhoods, you know, the, the way that people are brought close to commercial and, and public services. All of those elements are still in the plan, and, and that's really important because what we have here is a, I believe, an approach to urban design that's going to be an exemplar for, for future urban design projects to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Mulder, please.
Thank you very much, and, and I look forward to moving this project along. I'm a little disappointed that Realm Studios, despite councillor Hunter's motions and all the rest of it, never held a workshop with us as councillors in, in order to develop this particular proposal. But then, I must say that all the issues that I had and that others have had, thanks no doubt to the, the, the planning staff, are actually included in this particular proposal. So if Realm Studios wasn't listening to us, at least our planning staff were. But I'm, I'm also pleased to be informed that as part of the consultation, there will be graphics around the issue of the road network, the sub arterial in particular, and, and also the bio swales and the treatment of stormwater, which are issues that weren't originally addressed but are now being addressed in a, in a significant way. And I look forward to the feedback on that. The other issue I have with it is that we still have this concept in the master plan, and we are now working towards a structure plan, but we have the idea of six mixed-use zones, which I suspect strongly could become misused zones and excuses for high-density residential without all the kinds of services that you would expect in a mixed-use zone. So I look forward to some of those commentary coming back and, and, but in, in the end, this is now going out to community consultation in a form that I think most of us councillors would be happy with.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Being none. Councillor James, oh, sorry, councillor Walker, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just going to be quicker off the draw, thank you.
How shall I put this? My inclination is to support this process, noting that a lot of work's gone into it, and I don't have any criticisms on the calibre of the work and the engagement with staff as they try to really undertake a comprehensive consultation process around this. I guess my concerns remain with the dragging out of this process. I was, I was on the outer, I was but one of three when Skylands came before us early in this term of council. I think that that original decision of council was regrettable. And I'd note potentially where it could have led to. The, the land has now been changed. And it can be business-as-usual housing, it can be. And if it's business-as-usual, it's going to be a lot more dwellings than what the Skylands proposal is going to be. And it isn't going to be as, as livable, it isn't going to have the same community elements. But that would be the easy, easy approach. And the amount of time and effort that was put in with DBC by these landholders, you know, and it should be acknowledged, it's a significant quantum of funds. And I worry about the holding costs and the durations. It, it would be very easy to just, with the history to date, just walk away and say, all right, business as usual. Three twenty-five metres squared, off we go. And I'd also note that last week, the State Minister announced changes to the urban growth boundary within Clarence, many of which this council supported, but not all. So I hope that that weighs heavily on the decision-makers around this table about whether we are facilitating and what we might be facilitating through this process. We have an opportunity, I think, for a, a, a type of living that people haven't, haven't been able to see in experience. They have, you know, made the trip across to Western Australia and seen elements like Tindee or, or some of the other areas around there. I, I think, I think that the New Urbanism Project is, is, is great. I, I take a whole lot of comfort with the term Skylands around what is being proposed for that, that park, the level of public open space, and what might be the consequences of, again, a business-as-usual approach. So I'll weigh it up, there may be some other people to, to speak further, but I, I really worry about a, a potential, a, a delay, a go slow, a, a get to the point where a visionary process could be, be jettisoned because of the sheer time, and, and I would suggest council's approach throughout the, this term so far. So I'd really like to emphasise that, I'd be hopeful that the feedback we get in is, is wider. It's a greater Hobart approach, I'd hope that perhaps it's even beyond there. I would, I'd like to think that, that perhaps there may be elements of, of other areas where these projects have been done that might feed into, to what's being proposed here. Because I, I'd ask you to anticipate what the alternative to, to Skylands looks like in this area. And, and I think it would be quite deleterious than the vision that's being proposed.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Being none. Councillor James, write a reply, please.
Seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. So the motion for the chair is a recommendation with the amendments to part table A, thank you, as outlined by the deputy mayor. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Hunter. I'll put the motion, the amended motion, rather, all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. Thank you, councillor James. So it leaves a room as we go into item eight point four point three. Sorry, councillor Walker, thank you. My apologies, councillor James. As councillor James Walker leaves the room. All right, we have before us eight, item eight point four point three, which is a recommendation that council approves councillor Walker's request to attend Australian Institute of Company Directors course. Make an amendment here, though, it's in September 2025. There's a typo in accordance with the council allowance expenses policy 2023. So it's to be September this year, in line with our policy of 23. I'll call for a mover, please. Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Goine. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Great to see colleagues taking up opportunities. I know there was something that was very thoroughly enjoyed by councillor Hunter. So I'm very pleased to support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Thank you very much. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter, please.
Yeah, I'm extremely pleased that another colleague has taken up this opportunity. I know a number of us already hold this qualification around this table, which is fabulous. And it's great to have one more forthcoming. Particularly as councillor Walker is on the copying refused joint disposal authority on council's behalf, which would be a challenging role, I would say, having not done the course. So it's fabulous he's continued to do that prior to undertaking the course. But I'm sure he'll enjoy it and get a lot more out and contribute more after doing the course. But I think it'll also really add to what he can bring to the table here. So I thoroughly support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Councillor James?
I have a question, Mr Mayor, and I did raise it at the briefing on Friday. On page 47, it talks and refers to the Australian Institute of Company Directors also offers membership opportunities. So council policy provides the payment of membership of bodies and organisations whose activities are relevant to the role of councillor. This seems to be quite wide open to enable councillors, if they have this qualification from the Australian Institute of Company Directors, to decide for themselves as to whether they want to be a member of any of these organisations. And that may lead, in fact, to some of them having to declare an interest if by some chance any of those matters are brought to council for consideration even of a grant or some other pecuniary request. So my question is, does this, does this pose a conflict? And is it wide open for any of us to actually seek membership and have it paid by council?
Before I call on the general manager, in this particular case, I refer to page 47, the one that you referred to, in paragraph 2.7. And it's set out here that the cost quoted by the Australian Institute of Company Directors for the course being requested by councillor Walker is $9,300 for members, plus a membership fee for the first year of $945, which takes a total to $10,245, including GST. It would all, it would actually be $12,600, including GST for non-members. So there's clearly a saving there for ratepayers if councillor Walker is a member. When the policy, and you were part of the discussion when the policy was developed, councillor James, it is, as it sets out here, for membership of organisations relevant to a councillor's duty, councillor's work. Now, clearly there's the pub test and everything's publicly available. So I'll ask the CEO to, to, to provide further clarity here, but it's an opportunity to ensure that elected members continuing their professional, continuing professional development in a whole host of fields, but particularly the AICD. I note that councillor Chong is actually a gold medal winner of the Tasmanian Division. And also fellow, as, as am I. And, and councillor Hunter is a, is a graduate, as is the CEO. So it's a very worthy qualification. If I miss anyone out, please remind me. But I cannot speak highly enough of this qualification. CEO, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've covered the ground pretty well. But just to summarise, we're actually talking about two sections of the allowance policy here. There is a section that deals with memberships of bodies and organisations, as the mayor said, whose activities are relevant to the role of councillors and where the councillor actively participates in that body. That, those memberships will fall under the general allowance that is available to councillors individually for the four years of your term. In the context of this particular course, the membership in the first year would be picked up under the separate funding for these significant courses. Again, as the mayor has said, because that makes the overall course cheaper in, in net terms. But from subsequent years, then, obviously the individual councillor would need to renew that. And if they wanted it paid, it would come out of their basic allowance.
Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Deputy Mayor, write a reply?
I seek colleague support.
Thank you. I'll put the, the amended recommendation. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, colleagues. If you can invite councillor Walker back in, please. Timing is impeccable, councillor Walker. Moving now on to item eight point four point four, lease to department for children and young people, the Cambridge Primary School. The recommendation is before us and it's in five parts, A through to E. I'll move, sorry, I'll call for a mover. uh five parts, A through to E. Uh, I'll move, sorry, I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Kennedy. Uh, councillor Goine, thank you. Councillor Kennedy, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the recommendation uh pretty much covers it all off and gives me comfort with what we're doing. I do understand that there's um been a lot of communication around the community over this for a long time, but I'm comfortable with where we've landed and I seek council support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Goine, please.
Further to add?
Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Richard James, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Partie of the recommendation refers to, and it's on the board if we could actually bring that up, thank you. Formerly rescinds a resolution made on the tenth of September two thousand eighteen and the ninth of September two thousand and nineteen in relation to the lease of the public land at the Cambridge Memorial Oval. Now, what that does is basically it, it's rescinding our decision of that, at that time. And that was that the Department of Education agreed that no further encroachment onto the reserve will be sought for further expansion of the school footprint. Also in that resolution, the state government fund the relocation of the existing club rooms, excuse me, and toilet facilities and the, and the redevelopment of new, new-like facilities on the eastern end of the oval. And uh dot point three, that the state government meet the cost of providing for agreed additional car parking for both school and public use. And four, that the Department of Education agree to work with council, this is a really important one, to facilitate the provision of a public walking trail along the Borilla Rivulet at the rear of the school. And finally, council resolves to lease the public land uh to the extent as least as depicted in attachment one. So what this motion is doing in part E, it's rescinding all of those particular matters that were part of the public meeting that was held in September two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And by the very nature of, of rescinding that motion, it's basically saying there's no further there, there may be encroachments, further encroachments. There is no facility uh obligation on the Department of Education and Children Services, whatever the terminology is, um, to uh fund the um redevelopment of new facilities and on the particular uh at the eastern end of the oval. And we worked hard with the Department of Education to have that prov- uh provision of a public walking trail at the rear of the school. We had meetings and a number of councillors who were at the time, and I know councillor Chong was there, and I think he may be there at that time, I can't recall. So what this is resolution, part E, is effectively wiping out and rescinding all that work that was done at that public meeting on the, in September two thousand and, and um, uh eighteen. Now, on page fifty-five of the attachments, it shows you where the new gymnasium is going to be built. And that's encroaching upon the Cambridge Oval. And there was no provision for encroachments in the decision of two thousand and eighteen. But low and behold, by rescinding that decision in two thousand and eighteen, it allows an encroachment of the gymnasium onto the Cambridge Oval. And also, I might add, that where the gymnasium is being uh built, it's basically has to, we have to, or they have to demolish the existing club rooms uh because that's the site that the, that the gymnasium will be built. So, and also, may I add, that the access to the gymnasium will be at the Department of Education's or the school's decision. And only probably after hours or on some days when the school's not using the gymnasium, the public may be able to use that facility in order to be able to access and use it. So this is a really important decision that council's making here by rescinding that motion of the two thousand and eighteen. And I don't need to go through the enc- encroachments that, that now no longer basically are held within that motion, and it could mean for further encroachments to occur down the track. So look, I really want you to understand that by putting part D in there at this stage, is basically going to prevent any discussion at a public meeting because council's made the decision at this place, at this time, to rescind that decision of two thousand and eighteen, and that means that the public can't really do anything about saying what happened to the decision that the council made in two thousand and eighteen.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder, please.
Mr Mayor, of course you have to rescind the motion. The circumstances have changed, the facts have changed. There was a time when we were going to be building a gymnasium on our land to service the community and the school. And they were not going to make any contribution. And the sec- it's changed, it's changed now. The pavilion had to be demolished, and the Department of Education were going to build the pavilion. And we were going to build a gymnasium or something or other. Well, that, that pavilion has, has, is past its use by date. It has to be demolished anyway. In exchange for them building a much-needed community gymnasium and the, and the sporting things that go round with that, the basketball and all those other booming sports that require halls like that is now going to be built by the Department of Education. In exchange, we are going to build the new pavilion, which we would have had to do anyway. And of course you have to rescind the motion. When the facts change, I change my mind. What do you do, sir? That's as simple as it gets. No, it isn't a hundred percent of what I would want. There's all sorts of issues about why we need a road going down to, for people so they can walk their dogs when they could have parked up the top end, avoided pedestrian traffic conflicts and walked their dog down a footpath, but um no, I've lost those and, 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 you know, and no one is going. Look, perfect is the enemy of good. What we've got here is good. Let's go for it.
Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James Walker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Perfect is uh not only the enemy of the good, um, it's not possible. And it is indeed, if you like, the, the enemy of the school. Um. This school is the linchpin to the Cambridge community. It's been there a very long time. It is a public school attended by children. It is not land that is going to be utilised through this project for an exclusively private endeavour. It is going to be utilised by high, high levels of the public, generations, and that'll be in school hours. But the uh facility will have use outside of school hours. I didn't support the twenty eighteen decision. I think the twenty eighteen decision of council uh wasn't right, and I think it is in, I think it impaired and slowed this process down, which has obviously increased costs. But also, um, deteriorated and detracted from the experience that children um could and should be having at this school. Um, it's a tight bit of land where we're trying to, trying to achieve a lot with, um. Be nice to have had some more and to do things differently, but that's, that's not possible. You can't print more land. So, um, I strongly endorse this. As I said, the people of the school are members of the public, they're members of the community. And uh it's, it's a school, it's a great school, it's a school that's bulging at it seems, and um this is the right way forward, given all the challenges that there are. So I strongly uh encourage colleagues around the table to support the motion as listed in the agenda.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? After being done, uh councillor Kennedy, your right of reply, please.
I think um councillor Mulder and Walker for their comments there and having had a son that um was lucky enough to go to Cambridge for his primary education. Maybe the school wasn't so lucky, but anyway, um it was a great, a great result for us. And um, as has been um mentioned by colleagues, this has been a long journey and I've been a lot of the public meetings and times, things change in that amount of time. And I think we've got to the best place we can possibly be, and I seek colleague support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. I'll put the uh motion, which is the recommendation, all those in favour. Those against? So carried. Thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item nine. Nine point one, which is notice of motion, seeing in the name of councillor Hume. RTI application, high performance centre. Is there a second up for this motion, please? Councillor Hunter, thank you. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, look councillor Walker has um proposed an amendment um to this motion. Um, and that amendment is acceptable to me.
Okay, so for those watching at home, uh are we able, do we have it on the screen? Okay, which is not B F. No, I think those numbers A, B, C, D, it's, it's um, it's D, E, F, G. But uh what it is, is D will be compile and release all documentation provided by Clarence City Council to the Department of State Growth, associated with an AFL High Performance Centre in Rosney from the Clarence City Council meeting of the eleventh of December two thousand twenty-three until the thirty-first of December two thousand and twenty-four. Have I correctly reflected that councillor Walker and councillor Hume? And councillor Hunter, you're comfortable with that amendment? Thank you. So that now becomes the motion before the chair. Councillor Hume, the floor is yours.
Okay, um, so uh I'll, I'll speak to the original motion. I'll, I'll let councillor Walker speak, speak to his amendment, um. Uh, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I, I am comfortable with that um information documentation being uh made public. Uh, the reason I, the reason I've moved this motion is, um, as colleagues would be aware, uh there, there were, um, leading up to the Tasmanian government's, um I, I will continue to say flawed decision in relation to the High Performance Centre location. I know others would, would disagree. Um, but uh there were um site assessments done ahead of that final decision while Rosney was um considered by the Tasmanian government um to be the preferred site. Uh, the, the documents in relation to those site assessments have not been released. They've been released um in a limited way, so councillors and council officers have access to those documents. Um, but in accessing those documents, we've been required to um sign a section twenty-eight agreement. So what that means is, um, I've, I've had a look at those documents. First of all, um, we're not allowed, we're not able to make the comparison between the two sites. Um, we as Clarence councillors have access to the documents simply in relation to the Rosney site. Um, and what that agreement means is, uh, we, we can receive advice, of course, um from our um, council offices on, on technical experts within the council. Um, but there's no ability for um these documents to be scrutinised by independent experts. And there's no ability for us to uh to look at the information, making comparison between Kingston and Rosney. Um, now, I believe, given the significant public interest in this decision, I'm, I'm not suggesting that um, the decision's going to change in any way. I'd say that would be, for anyone wishing that, that would be a fantasy. Um, but still, it's a, it's a decision that had significant public interest um because of a number of issues, um, in- including from my perspective, the incredible uh social and economic benefits that would flow to a local community from having um a high performance centre in their community. And, and that's something that, um, you know, congratulations to Kingston, they, they're going to, they're going to realise and, and you know, in an incredible way. Um, but that significant public interest, I think, means that the public deserve the right um to be able to see those documents and to scrutinise those decision, that decision. Now, I can't see any reason why the Tasmanian government would keep those documents secret. I can't, I can't think of a, a reason why they'd have for that. Um, and unless, of course, the decision wasn't a technical one, it was actually a political decision. Um, I hope it wasn't, but there's quite a few things that give me cause for suspicion. Um, the, the fact that we had Rosney being spoken about as the preferred site for many, many months um before the, the final decision on Kingston was made. The fact that after the announcement was made about the Kingston site, um, I heard an, an interview um with an ABC journalist on, on ABC Radio where he had intimate details of the site assessments months before it was made available to us. Um, where would that information have come from? And he even ap- uh seemed to have um indications of costings of the cut and fill uh for the Rosney site. Where did that information come from? Even in the documents that we've received, there's none of that information available. Uh, clearly it was leaked, clearly it was leaked. Um, and now we've seen that e- even though we understood, we haven't seen the detailed designs of the High Performance Centre. Um, but while we were understanding that the state government's contribution to this was, was capped at seventy million dollars, now we're hearing reports of a, a, a cost blowout. Um, so are they apparently, um, you know, putting, putting more money towards the project? Um, I am very suspicious and I concur with um, the, the comments of the mayor and the media at the time the decision was made. Um, that the process had, had, had no proper structure and had been incredibly poorly handled by senior bureaucrats. Um, I'm highly suspicious about this project. Let's get the documents out there. Let's give uh independent experts an ability to scrutinise them. Let's give the public an ability to scrutinise them and make their judgement as to whether this was a sound decision and whether it was based on technical information, financial information, or, as I suspect, a political decision.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Hunter, please.
Uh, I have a question, please, for you, Mr Mayor. Does this project, will it go through the normal development application process with Kingborough Council?
Uh, my understanding is that development application has not yet been received, nor have a heads of agreement been signed. Uh, the mayor, which was interviewed by Leon Compton Monday of last week, said that she expects to receive a development application within coming months. So the short answer is yes, it will go through the Kingborough Planning Department.
And in that case, the technical reports will form part of that development application and made public through the public exhibition process?
One would hope so, but I, I can't speak for either the government or Kingborough Council.
Okay. Uh, no further questions, thanks.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution to this notice of motion? Councillor Richard James.
Mr Mayor, for that title, thank you. I read this and very carefully took note of the number of comments and, and I was sort of in a sort of a, a neutral sort of stance in relation to that until my colleague got up and mentioned a number of words for a sound decision, whether it was or not. Or it was a political decision in, in the case of this. So look, I won't support it. And the reasons I won't support this are twofold. Firstly, the winners have won. Uh, the government made a decision and as a result of that has gone to Kingborough. I don't think the public need to know about all this sort of information about documentation provided by the council to the Department of State Growth and application under the right of information for all information related to assessments. It, I, I, I think as far as the, the decision that's occurred in, and we're talking about Clarence now, we're not talking about Kingborough. We're talking about, basically, we're representing the citizens of Clarence. And in my opinion, I stand corrected, in my opinion, they are not interested in knowing anything about this. All they want to do is enjoy the win and, and they really took and did everything possible to make sure that the parklands were kept in their normal state. And they were obviously safe for the, the public to enjoy. The other thing that I'm really starting to take a bit of notice of is that there seems to be a little bit of a, a um contrast between the minister, the state minister for small business and also the infrastructure minister. And the former has come out and said, well, there may be something here that may be able to be renegotiated in relation to the stadium.
Just to clarify, the minister for small business, the honourable Jane Howlett, uh, MP. I think you might be talking about the minister for business, energy, industry and resources, honourable Erica Betts, MP.
Thank you.
All right, so let's be careful.
All right, so let's be careful, we, yeah, let's not.
I was trying not to.
No, well, you actually just met the wrong person, so I've corrected you.
I understand.
So you're talking about the Honourable Erica Betts, MP, and the Honourable Kerry Vincent, MLC. Okay, thank you.
And, and Minister Abetts has come out and said there may be some, uh, renegotiation in relation to the stadium. And that has really made a, a decision in relation to some of the people in the community that is not a fait accompli. However, the Minister for Infrastructure, the Honourable Kerry Vincent, has come out and basically said, it's clear cut. We've made this decision and it's going to go ahead in that, in that form. So already there is a little bit of a splinter that's occurred. And it's, and it's probably going to help in the discussion in relation to whether we have a stadium or not, whether that's the appropriate location, I don't believe it is, for a stadium. And also too, it may mean that the Honourable Erica Betts may be the next leader of the opposition.
Oh, councillor James, councillor James.
To fall into place at the end of the day. So I will not be supporting the motion.
Right, councillor James, I call your attention, don't talk over me, for number one. And keep your comments relevant to the matter before the chair. Not for you to wax lyrical about what might be happening at the state soon in leadership roles. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution this evening? Councillor Goine, thank you.
I think it's very unfair to say that there are winners and losers. There are obviously aspects to losing, um, it here in Rosney that are disadvantaged to our community as well as an advantage. Yes, we're retaining the parklands, but we're losing the economy and, you know, the, the brilliance that the High Performance Centre could have brought to Clarence. I also think it's, um, not the correct thing to do to speak on behalf of the community when saying that they don't want the information provided, because I'm pretty sure they do, even if it is just a gloat over how it was never going to happen. I'm sure they're probably more than happy to hear the information. And we always constantly go on in this place about providing more information to our community. My only question is, is did we need to bring this as a notice of motion to council to put in this right for information?
Uh, CEO, please.
Um, thank you, um, for the question, uh, through you, Mayor. Um, I believe in this place, previously I've said that in some instances, um, it certainly isn't usual practice for me as CEO or my staff to RTI the government. So, uh, in the context of this matter and this RTI, I believe it is appropriate.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Goine.
Thank you for the answer. I've actually just got a response from one of the Say Rosney parks who would actually like to read the information. So based upon that and the wonder of the internet, um, I will be supporting your motion. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Kennedy, thank you.
Just to reiterate those comments, it doesn't matter, um, I've had so many, um, people in the community asking that were on either side would like to know more information and I personally would as well, so I will be supporting the motion. Thank you, Daniel. I think it, councillor.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Mulder, thank you.
Um, no, I won't, I won't be supporting this motion. And it's not about, it's not about transparency or integrity or something like that. Um, those councils who wished us, have already been given some information and, and even some of the technical information that we so desperately want has been redacted from that. So what hope do you think you're going to get any further information? The decision was clearly political. And if you want any hint about that, first of all, reflect upon how some of us were so active in the citizens' poll. So active and attacking people, um, and, and calling them names um, about being anti-development because they happened to have a different view about this. So we actually made it political. We could have simply put the decision out. We could have had the electors' poll run its course. We could have, like we're doing on Skylands, put out some diagrams explaining what was going where so that people weren't confused about approving anything. And we didn't do those things. Now, the fact that it's political and have a look at it and all the geotechnical reports, let's just have a look at, um, the fact that suddenly the Kingston blowout is about. Massive increase in expenditure. Surprise, surprise. Now, if it's a massive blowout in Kingston, um, what are we suggesting? It wouldn't have been, or it would have been, or who knows? But the fact is, is that the information that was used, um, was basically, clearly, it wasn't accurate anyway. So what's the point in getting access to it? Now, it was Minister Guinan, who actually I heard, saying that the reason was the geotech assessment and the costs of the dig out. Now, what those costs were, I don't know, um, and he, and, and, and I would suspect he didn't know either. Now, it's pie in the sky to suggest that the government will now decide to release this information. And it's approved, and, and even if it is released and we get the same result as what we got before, then we'll have to appeal to the ombudsman to get the answer. And the last time I checked, we were talking about a two, three year delay in assessing such a complex issue. So really, it's much better, if this was a political decision, and it clearly was, in my view, then it's much better to get on to our members of parliament and get them to pressure the government to release this information and to get them to do it. And in any event, if the people in Rosney Parks are so keen, why don't they initiate the development, the request, the RTI? And then they will find, as we will, you just hit a brick wall. So I really think it's time now to move on. The government has done what the government has done, um, and mulling over the, um, you know, the cinders in the bowl of this burnt out aspiration we had is, um, is achieving nothing.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. I think it's important to point out that we didn't have any information to communicate, especially where, you know, diagrams pointing where things were going, et cetera. So there wasn't that information available to communicate to the public. So let's be fair in what we contribute here in the chamber. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Chong, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, like councillor Mulder, I am cynical about what information will come out of this, whether it will be severely redacted and of very much use to anybody at all. However, I do understand there are a lot of people who actually would like to look at this information. So for that reason, I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James Walker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's, it's asked what's to be gained from this. Um, and I think there is stuff to be gained, maybe not necessarily for us in this term. Uh, but I think putting together the whole journey of what happened, how council went about things, maybe how the state went about things too, um, and having it there in some sort of compiled fashion is useful so that future councils can learn from it. Because I think there is a lot to learn. I think from the state's perspective, um, a lot of this decision-making being done in such, um, constrained timeframes has, has been the cause of, of perhaps how we ended up, where we did end up. Uh, and it hasn't been without cost. You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for a elector poll, a divided community. Um, and I would suggest, um, a high performance centre that is not located in an optimal place. And let's not forget, um, Gilston Bay was something we could have submitted. It was up to us. We didn't have to do what we were being told or implied. You know, the whisper was, you really liked that site. Um, Parklands was probably looked at by some people, uh, somewhere around Docklands as they drank a couple of piccolos and expanded Google Earth and went, oh, there's a green space there, that'll do. Um, we could have made Gilston Bay work and also through the other options through the year. Um, remembering this council wasn't even prepared to even engage in a discussion about the future of Blunston Arena. Um, I have made an amendment and I'm appreciative of the, uh, the motion mover accepting my proposed amendment. I would say that, uh, I think he is on the right page with Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Skylands. But, uh, we probably have irreconcilable differences around, um, the location of the proposed High Performance Centre. And I think time isn't going to make it look awesome. It'll be remembered as we proposed that steep dollar, dollarite veneer hillside. Um, we should have stood up to the AFL because we could have got them a site that was better suited, would have been a better product, would have been more enticing for people to come and play. But anyway, back to my point D, and my apologies, uh, I'm throwing stones from a glass house if I criticize other people on this matter. It is something that happens from time to time where you, um, bring something late to the piece because it forms in, informs in your head over the period of time, um, over the course of a weekend and then the, the day happens and you're not able to compile it sooner. It probably would have been, uh, more grammatically elegant and, and it might have been a little bit more nuanced if I'd been able to percolate it sooner, but sometimes that's not always possible. Although I would say in this term of council, those late last minute additions are something we see less of. So that's a, that's a good thing. So, um, as I said, I, I'd like, you know, I don't think that this is going to necessarily show anything amazing, but if we can have all of the information we put together and have all of the information from the state can be sort of, again, both accessible and easily to understand, future councils can learn from this and communities can learn from it as well. So on that basis, if nothing else, uh, I'd suggest you support councillor Hume's motion as listed in the agenda with the addition of point D.
Uh, councillor Darko, councillor Warren, do you wish to make a contribution? Deputy Mayor, please.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, thank councillor Hume for bringing forth the motion. I hope this is, and I don't think it is, about going back over the cinders in the bowl. Um, I'm sure it isn't. Um, I take your point that you feel this was a political decision, but then I'm not sure why one would be surprised about that, given the removal of, uh, the stadium proposal from the post-process. When we talk about assessments, I'm not sure why any of that would become as a surprise. So anyhow, um, I do think that there's potential value to be gained from this material, should it ever eventuate. I'm not so certain that we'll get what we might be hoping for, but I do share some of the views of councillor Walker that it could be, uh, something that does, uh, produce some learnings if we do get something valuable for councils and community moving forward. Um, that would be a great thing if we were able to. I don't have a lot of hope that it would be, will be forthcoming. But, um, if you don't ask, you don't know. So, um, I'm always one to, uh, support the asking. And so, uh, for that reason, I will, uh, be supporting the motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Before I call on councillor Hume for his right of apply, I now enter the debate as a councillor and not as your mayor. Uh, from the outset, it is important that I reiterate that whilst, like many, I was bitterly disappointed that the AFL High Performance Centre is not to be developed here in our city, on what we were told was the government's preferred site, right up until the 11th hour. Um, but I am and always have been an ardent supporter of the team, the stadium and the High Performance Centre. Following the government's announcement on the 19th of November last year that they had changed their minds and had decided to construct the High Performance Centre at the Twin Ovals in Kingborough, both publicly and privately, I congratulated and wished the Kingborough Council every success with the High Performance Centre. However, as is a matter of public record, in my view, the negotiation and consultation practices undertaken by the government in respect of the High Performance Centre were extremely disappointing. Bordering, in my view, unconscionable. In my experience, the process had no proper structure and had been poorly handled by the Department of State Growth and the minister. I was concerned that the government wanted a free ride from day one. Colleagues will recall that the state government approached councils looking for land to be handed over, not willing to make use of their own land or purchase private land. It became clear as time passed that the state was trying to push costs back onto council and its community. For council and our community, we had a number of non-negotiables. Most importantly, we weren't prepared to sell or transfer the Rosney Parklands to the Tasmanian government. We also considered it important the community receive a return on its, on its land via a lease payment. And as I said over six months ago, the government and club has sacrificed a better location because they failed to accurately estimate the cost. So now let's fast forward six months to Sunday, the 18th of May of this year, when the Minister for Sport, the Honourable Nick Dyke, MLC, standing with the Mayor of Kingborough, councillor Paul O'Reed, makes a pre-budget announcement that an additional $45 million of taxpayers' funds, an additional $45 million would now be invested in the High Performance Centre. Taking the Tasmanian taxpayers' contribution from $60 million that we were told was non-negotiable to $105 million. And further, as outlined by Mayor Reet on Leon Compton's morning programme on Monday, the 19th of May, that does not include moving the current users. The Kingborough Knights Cricket Club and the Kingborough Tigers Football Club debran new ovals and club rooms. It also doesn't include the costs associated with the relocation of community infrastructure, such as the dog walking area, the mountain bike track park, as well as construction of the Spring Farm Link Road. And like the city of Clarence, Kingborough has been clear, the ratepayers will not foot the bill for these activities. So be assured, the $105 million is, in my opinion, the tip of the iceberg. Colleagues, I think we can all agree that our experience with the Department of State Growth over the High Performance Centre was far from pleasant. To be frank, it was an awful experience for council, our staff and our community. The division, as has been touched on, of our community caused by the severe lack of information coming out of the government was truly gut-wrenching to experience. Let's not forget that throughout the process, the city of Clarence had to dedicate hundreds of thousands of dollars of ratepayers' money and resources to help this hapless liberal state government facilitate the process. And for what? We lost 12 months of our city hard plan and numerous other pieces of work have been delayed or put on hold because officers were responding to community concerns, running a public meeting or organising an elector poll. As I said in my opening remarks, I fully support the AFL High Performance Centre and wish Kingborough every success in the delivery of this project. However, based on our experience, I have significant concerns with this government's capacity to deliver. As Mayor Reet said on Leon Compton last week, the Kingborough Council have not yet received a development application. I also understand that the heads of agreement have not yet been signed. And with the ambition to field VFL and VFLW teams next year, in the 2026 season, I have grave doubts the team will be training, the teams will be training at the Twin Ovals. Colleagues, there is no doubt of the high level of public interest in this project and there is no doubt that many more millions of taxpayer dollars will be required to deliver what needs to be required, or delivered, rather. This right to information application is necessary. As a lack of transparency by this government continues to this day and despite past requests, all we have received has been heavily redacted documents that is, I'm sure we can all agree, far from adequate. It is for these reasons I heartily support this motion and urge your colleagues to likewise. Councillor Hume, your right of apply, please.
Well timed, Mayor. One second to go. Um, look, I, I think, I think all, uh, colleagues, um, have contributed to this debate for their contributions. Um, whether you're in favour of the motion or not, um, but I'll, I'll respond to a few points that were raised. Um, first of all, it, it is rather surprising to hear councillor James, um, argue against transparency. Um, it's not his, not his usual MO. Um, but, you know, is he suggesting that the public don't have the right to scrutinise the decision? And I'd be interested to know.
Excuse me, sorry, sorry, stop the clock, please. Point of order, councillor James?
Yes, uh, on a matter of, um, uh, clarification, um, I think it's un-toward to mention that I'm contrary to transparency and that was, um, referred to by councillor Holm and I seek him to withdraw the comment.
Well, councillor Hume's entitled his opinion, councillor James. Um, I, I don't support that, uh, point of, point of order. Councillor Hume, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I'd be interested to know what his decision, what, what his view would have been on, on this um, had the decision gone in Rosney's favour rather than Kingston's. Um, councillor Mulder, yes, I can appreciate your, your pessimism about what may or may not be released. Um, but I think it's important to recognise that, uh, the right to information laws have particular criteria um, about, you know, the circumstances under which information should be released, which, um, I suggest would be very different to what, whatever, um, process the government's used to do to make the decision to suppress the information. Um, councillor Walker, um, thank you for your amendment. Um, I, in terms of alternative sites, obviously that's something we disagree on. I, I believe that the idea that we could have offered, offered an I believe that the idea that we could have offered an alternative site is a fantasy. And in fact, that's the reason why I supported your amendment, because I think that releasing that information will actually show that quite clearly. In terms of the example councillor Walker, the examples councillor Walker offered, you have Gilston Bay, where there is land owned by the Education Department, so therefore it was not ours to offer for the proposal. So it needed the support of the Education Department, which we did not have to bring that forward. And in the case of Blunston Arena or Ninja Stadium, as it's now known, there was still no clear option as to where the second oval would have gone, and it was occupied by a tenant that, you know, intended to continue that occupancy in accordance with the agreement. And thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your comments. I'm actually not surprised that it was a political decision. But that being the case, I think it's important to get hold of this information and release it publicly to make it known and also to make the Tasmanian government accountable for that fact. So thank you all colleagues for this contribution. I commend the motion to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. I'll put the amended motion as before the chair to the vote. Seeing in the name of councillor Hughes, all those in favour? Those against? So carried, thank you. Moving our colleagues on to, bless you, item 9.2, which is the future... So notice a motion seeing in the name of councillor James regarding the future of Alma's Activities Centre building. Is there a second up? Thank you, councillor Mulder. Councillor James, please.
Thank you, and I thank councillor Mulder for the second of the motion. Look, this matter of Alma, and it's been a worthy asset that's been used by the community. The Alma Street Management Group, Senior Citizens Group occupied it and ran that management committee for many years. There have been a lot of functions that have been organised, and in the chief executive's comments, he makes mention of that in his comments. And it's also, the council has allocated funding for the development of a facility strategic plan, where it's all part of councils' activities centres and halls will be assessed on the possible demand and capacity for community use. So this motion really is not sort of flagging we ought to sell it or cash in on it as such. It's merely just to provide us with the current update of the current costs and maintenance of the centre and see if there is a need, and I'm sure there is a need, and to be utilised by members of the community in order to have the use of that beautiful facility. It's listed on the heritage register, and there are some factors in relation to the external additions which really detract from the building. And I'm not saying at this stage they ought to be removed or anything in that nature, but then again, we need to be able to make an assessment as to whether that's impacting on the character of it, whether those facilities are necessary for the use of the community by user groups and if not, by other short-term requirements. So this motion is really to follow on and take on board what has already been mentioned as part of council's funding in this particular case for this facility strategic plan for those community halls and buildings. And also to, it may come about that once we've had this assessment done, that there may be a need to reinstate or re-sort of utilise what has been used by many people for private functions and so on. I spoke to the head of Infrastructure and Natural Assets, and he actually circulated a copy to my colleagues today, and it really sums up a lot of the matters that whether Alma's Activities Centre kitchen and toilets need upgrading as requested, and he has informed councillors. But a building inspector has inspected the facility, and minor works have been completed in readiness for the centre being available for community use in 2026. So two current limitations to the facility are the facility does not have a disability access, and of course, when we spent that amount of money to relocate the local radio station to the Howa Recreation Centre, the upstairs area is not to be occupied, and officers are working on limiting access to that upstairs area. I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Mulder?
My only comment is, for some time now, this building has been very difficult for council to handle. The cost of renovations to bring it up to standard have blown out. A lot got to do with the supply chain issues during Covid. Clearly, given its track record, it's had a little bit of use here and a bit of use there. It's a significant heritage building apart from the 1970s horrible brick façade that has been placed on it, which would obviously have to be removed in any developments. This building is just surplus to council requirements, and whatever it takes, let's get on with the business of moving it in so someone can turn it into what it really ought to be, a lovely heritage listed home along with several others in Alma Street, and the potential to add to the heritage of this building. And we sincerely apologise for the mess of a brick wall at the front.
Any other, councillor Chong, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm not going to support this. And the reason is not that I don't think it's important we have information about Alma's, absolutely. But looking at the last paragraph of the CEO's comments, "Council currently lacks the staff resource and funding to undertake a separate feasibility study", but it is going to be incorporated into the wider facility strategic plan. If we're getting this information already and it's being worked on already, we shouldn't take officers' time away from doing that to specifically look at this one property. And yes, I understand it's not being used as much as it could be. There is children's services at the back of it. It's not like it's an encumbered piece of property. So, you know, it's not as simple as just sell it off and put a house there. But I honestly think this is just going to detract from the wider facilities review that we need to have, and I can't support this.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Being none, councillor James, your right of apply? Thank you, I'll put the motion. That is the, seeing in the name of councillor James. All those in support? Those against? So lost, all right. Moving now on to item 9.3, notice a motion seeing in the name of councillor Mulder. Is there a second up, please? Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Mulder, thank you.
I hope this seconding doesn't pertain well for this decision. This is about actually securing the future of this link road. Despite the government having said, "No, you're not going to do it for another 20 years", let's get strategic about this and say, "Well, they've changed their mind on other projects, like the Gordon's Hill Road ramps, and because we took a strategic view, those ramps could be built." And I make this comment that, a lot of people refer to this as my project, especially after all the media last week, after the last meeting. But this project was actually initiated by then Alderman Chipman during election campaign, complete with photo op, standing up there calling for it, then elected onto council, and for more than a year did nothing. So that's when I first took up the issue, because I could see the merits in it. By 2006, we'd been through the process several times, and council went to public consultation with a draft amendment to change the zoning. Most of it isn't public land anyway, but there's a small section which is zoned residential and therefore in private hands. This proposed amendment was put to council, went out to consultation and rejected by council. And then by this time I had left council, and councillor James had, assumed councillor Walker, should I say, had stepped into my spot on council. And when the proposed amendment came back, there was a public gallery and a packed gallery, because I was part of it by then. And when it came before it, only Alderman Walker supported continuing with the road reservation. The whole council, except for Alderman Chipman, who actually abstained from his own election campaign issue. So that just shows, you know, to me, it says an awful lot about how this really good idea that we have now restarted, that in 2019 I put this project back on the agenda in the Greater Hobart City Plan. And the reason I've done it now, gone back this thing, having been rejected by the government, is that when we did the Gordon's Hill Road ramps, when we sold that land to Southern Cross Care, their first proposal that they brought to a workshop with us actually didn't allow for future ramps because the government had already ruled them out. And if it wasn't for the intervention at that workshop, we would no longer be able to do the Gordon's Hill Road ramps because they would now have aged care and residential facilities over them. And I'm urging my colleagues now that we need to get on with this. The government may have rejected it now, but they've already said 20 years, we'll have a look at it again. And I've got a sneaking suspicion that with the traffic issues, that this will come back onto the table long before then. But whether it's 20 years, 50 years or 100 years, it's important that we preserve this strategic corridor.
Councillor James?
Yes, well, thank you. I'll rise as a second up, and any idea which even promotes some sort of direction or some interest, I'll support. And I made that comment in relation to a previous motion, and I thank my colleague for putting that forward as an idea and suggestion. And this is in that same... So part A, a future extension of the Flagstaff Gully Link Road, and I hope that I don't give this motion the kiss of death, following on from what has also been a sort of a notional thing that's occurred to date. And B, an amendment to the local provisions, church a lot of the Tasmanian planning scheme clearance to facilitate this extension. And I was advised by the chief planner on Friday that that may take some time or it may even be followed up within 12 to 18 months. So having said that, I won't say any more because I'm a little bit worried about what it may do to this motion. So having said that, I will say tongue in cheek, I seek council support.
Any other colleagues wishing to contribute to this debate? Councillor Darko, thank you.
I could not oppose this more strongly. We do have an issue with urban sprawl, and it is important that we do what we can to preserve this land for the natural environment that exists there, that is, as pointed out within the motion, under landscape conservation. We have had this indication that it's not something that is necessary, and we should be doing what we can to facilitate further expansion of public transport instead of building yet more roads.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Any other colleagues wish to make... Councillor Walker?
Yes, a couple of points, thank you, Mayor. I think the key point to note with this is whether you're, you know, happy with slapping tarmac down or not, this isn't going to lead to the steam rollers and the hot mix turning up tomorrow or the next day or the next year, or probably the next decade. This is about trying to put a line on a map and say, "This is where it could go", and we're trying to think that way should the need arise. And we can argue the point now whether it does or it doesn't. I think I stick with the point that it does. But if you don't do this, then you end up with the example that was given with the on and off ramps. You know, what did I say, a pound of prevention, better than an ounce of cure. And as far as people that may have some concerns through you, Mayor, about Alderman James seconding this motion, don't think of it that way. The public love a redemption story. Redemption stories are what gives us hope in a cynical environment. The light was lost when Alderman James, it was Alderman James in 2012 when he...
It should be Alderman still.
When he voted to snuff out the reservation concept. But redemption and light has come, and he's now backing this motion. This is something that we should delight in. I support this motion. As I said, last meeting, councillor Mulder got his compliment of quotas for the term then, so no more to be added today. But again, the key point is reservation. It's a really strategic corridor, the way that it links, if you like, with the northern suburbs, and the fragility that we're now experiencing with traffic on the bridge, where one small thing somewhere can just lead to big congestion all over the show. And again, pointing out it's a reservation, it's not a termination, and it might actually be a useful public transport corridor link as well, because not everybody likes to, you know, go from the eastern shore to the northern suburbs, having to go through the CBD, and the options to not do that are quite limited. So I seek council support.
Councillor Hughes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I'm all for public transport. I think public transport's a fantastic thing to have. And, you know, I'll advocate for public transport infrastructure, and I've also advocated very strongly for urban design that encourages more active and public transport. But what we have to recognise is that, you know, that urban design is something that unfortunately, over the urban sprawl we've got now, has to be retrofitted. And, you know, we need to recognise the reality that public transport, while it can be encouraged, is not for everyone. There are people who, you know, not only like the convenience of a car, but really rely on that convenience, because not everyone is just committing to work and back. There are people who, you know, for example, need to drop kids off at school and then head to work and then come back, and then they'll pick the kids up, and then they'll do the shopping, and, you know, you just can't do all that with public transport. And the reality is that in a growing city, while cars, you know, may not be a great solution for transport, they are a necessity and they will, you know, they will continue to grow. And we need infrastructure that keeps pace with that growth. We need infrastructure that deals with the congestion that Hobart's facing. Hobart being, my understanding is, according to a fairly recent study, the, I think it was the third most congested city in, or capital city in Australia. And, yeah, the Flagstaff Gully Link Road is an important solution. Now, this is about planning for it. It's not about building it, it's about preparing a report. It's about preparing a report and having, on how we can preserve that option, preserve that corridor for the future. As councillor Walker indicated, it's not about, you know, it won't cause the steam rollers to come rolling in straight away, possibly even, well, certainly not this term, possibly even the next term, we'll see what happens. But I am absolutely with councillor Mulder, councillor James, councillor Walker on the importance of this corridor, of this important link to, you know, overcoming the congestion problems on the eastern shore and reducing traffic on, well, some other routes such as the Gordon's Hill Rat Run. So, yeah, thank you. I urge colleagues to support.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Third most congested city, it's no wonder we're the only capital city without fit-for-purpose public transport. And I always, it always amuses me when my colleagues say, "Oh, but you can't go on the bus with your tools", or "When you've got children to be dropped off and collected after school". The data shows that there are a significant number of people who drive into the city, park there all day and then drive home again. The data shows that. If we can get those people... If we can get those people onto public transport, it frees up the roads for people who do need to use their vehicles and would make a significant difference. And let me propose, why don't we have a workshop on improving our public transport? Because that's something we could do far more quickly, far more effectively and far more cheaply than building a link road. We could have public transport up and running within six months, 12 months. If we put buses that ran where people need to go frequently and got all those people who just use their cars because public transport to work is not an option. If you could come out of work at five o'clock or six o'clock and catch a bus home, people would do it. I, I've worked in the city. I've worked with people who have had to down tools at 20 past five because the last bus was going and they'd have to wait an hour for the next one. If there was a bus going every 10 minutes, they would use the public transport. Um, solve the public transport and we don't need more roads that cut through bushland.
Any other councillor Hunter, thank you.
Thanks for bringing this motion forward councillor Mulder. I'm going to take a slightly different perspective to some of my other colleagues. Look, I don't know enough about the Flagstaff Gully Link, uh, not knowing the history and being, this is my first term on council, which I do appreciate. The intention of this is to have a report done and bring that information to myself and councillors who have been here longer than myself. But I won't be supporting the motion and it's purely based on the fact that I don't think it's a priority for us at the moment. I think, uh, given how long it would take as well, this might be something to consider, uh, at the start of the next term of council if it's something that the councillors are interested in and then they can carry it forward throughout that duration. I'm not opposed to, to the idea and learning more about it. I just don't see it as a priority at this stage.
Thank you councillor Hunter. councillor Goine, councillor Chong, councillor Kennedy. Deputy mayor.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I've certainly also been a in principle supporter of the concept of Flagstaff Gully Link Road. As we've heard, it's been talked about over a very long period of time with very little action. Um, I suspect that some of the historical reluctance related to the fact the state government hasn't shown any particular interest in supporting it. And I suspect that that's why previous councillors perhaps shied away from investing council's resources into pursuing those decisions at that time, not because of their lack of interest or commitment, but I think a determination that it perhaps wasn't in council's best interests to pursue something with strong opposition from the crown. Nevertheless, here we are today and this motion, um, simply isn't about drawing a line on a map. It's about bringing a report back to decide whether we want to draw a line on a map at a pu, a future point in time and put, and potentially bring forward, um, an amendment, to the planning scheme, which of course we would, you know, hopefully have a greater understanding of what challenges that may bring. Because I suspect that some of the challenges that emerged previously may rear their heads again moving forward, but that doesn't mean that won't be something we want to uptake, uh, perhaps on this occasion. So, um, I do think, um, I do support the idea of getting a report back and workshopping it. I also don't think that things like our public transport systems and looking at those things actually have to be mutually exclusive. I actually think that, um, you can do those things concurrently because, uh, they're all good things to have working together. But, um, so I will be supporting this motion, uh, simply, uh, to achieve a report, to see where things are at now and put us in the best position to make a position, uh, an informed decision on the likelihood of being successful with, um, any future action council might take. Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor. Before I call councillor Mulder, I'll enter the debate as a councillor, not as your mayor. And as I said at our last meeting, colleagues, it is disappointing that time and time again, the state liberal government fails to step up and deliver critically important infrastructure for the eastern shore. The Department of State Growth failed to release the full feasibility report for the Flagstaff Gully Link Road and its dismissal of the project for the next 20 years is in my view, yet another example of this government's inaction on vital infrastructure needs here in Clarence. For the minister to dismissively suggest in response to our last motion that I work collaboratively with his department, not only demonstrates a distinct lack of respect for the Clarence community, but also undermines evidence-based decision-making. I'm sure we can all agree that to work collaboratively requires both parties to be at the table and at a minimum undertake to work in good faith. To be clear, it is Minister Vincent's department that has failed to provide council with a copy of their completed feasibility, feasibility study. As a result, our engineers are unable to understand and assess the current traffic demand and quantify the potential benefits of this project. Without the benefit of the department's report, our view, based on the 2009 ratio report, is that the Flagstaff Gully Link Road is a high-return, low-regret investment. The report demonstrates that the project delivers strong value. Up to $3.50 return for every $1 invested, far exceeding projects by the New Bridgewater Bridge at 53 cents on the dollar. We are a growing city and as the former mayor of Surrell, Minister Vincent well knows that Surrell is also a growing municipality and congestion on the eastern approaches to the Tasman Bridge continues to increase, pushing more traffic through unsafe alternatives like Grasstree Hill and Brink Top Roads. Without a strategic approach that delivers new infrastructure to ease this pressure, including a viable connection between the Tasman Highway and Bowen Bridge, safety and economic productivity is being undermined and put at grave risk. Planning for the future must include the Flagstaff Gully Link Road as well as a replacement for the aging and structurally compromised Tasman Bridge. A freight route between Brighton and Cambridge has also long been discussed and championed by eastern shore councils. The Tasman Bridge is a critical pinch point for Greater Hobart and its replacement or duplication must be factored into long-term planning and that must start now. A strategic approach to transport planning on the eastern shore is long overdue to replace the ad hoc approach that excessive Tasmanian governments have adopted for years and to give future focus to this critical issue. On a positive note, I'm pleased to report that Minister Vincent has agreed to my request for a meeting to discuss eastern shore traffic priorities and we're set to meet mid next month. So I hope to have an update for colleagues at an next council meeting. I obviously, I'll heartily support this motion and urge all colleagues who are likewise. councillor Mulder, your right of reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of comments about, um, there's no rush, there's no impediment. A small section of this corridor, a critical section of this corridor that cannot be bypassed, is actually residential land. If the owner was to put a DA before us tomorrow to subdivide that land, it would, we would have no grounds to refuse that. And there would have been gone the strategic opportunity to build this road. So I, I, I do see that this is important and I do see it's to be knocked in from a strategic perspective. As for the idea that this is some conservation area and that building a road through this landscape conservation zone would somehow or other, um, impact upon the conservation values of that area. Can I really suggest if colleagues want to do, if colleagues really want to understand this issue, just go up and there's a walking track down there already. There's a four-wheel drive track that services the power lines in that particular area. It is clapped out, not leech-infested because it's not warm enough, but it's, 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 it's clapped out. What this may give an opportunity, if we had a road there, there would be a, there would be a fire escape for the people up in Wallana Road, which is actually in one of those terrible situations where it's in a, a fire, uh, an outside area and it has no escape routes. These are considered, any fire department will tell you, these are death traps if we don't build a road. So there's some other advantages to this. In terms of public transport, the public transport, the buses could use this road as well as a way of bypassing it. The big issue is, is getting rid of it. All they talk about urban sprawl, governments throughout the country, they're all talking about the urban sprawl and concentrating density housing on the transport routes. In every other city except Tasmania, we're talking about off-road transport routes. In Tasmania, we don't have any. And if you put the buses and if you can, and, and the way to deal with this, this isn't traffic going into Hobart. This is traffic that doesn't want to go to Hobart, but under the current arrangements is forced to. It's forced to because there isn't a quick link from Mornington, which is going to take all the rural traffic to Hobart. Look, we really do need to get this and we need to get it underway and we need to just put the lines on the map so that when the inevitable happens and they change their mind like they did on the Gordon's Hill ramps, we're in a position to do it and we haven't lost the opportunity.
Thank councillor Mulder. I'll put the, uh, the motion standing in your name. All those in favour? Those against? So carried.
Thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item number 10, councillor question times. There are no questions on notice. 10.3 answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting as listed in the agenda. Moving on to 10.4 questions without notice. Are there any questions from the floor starting this evening with the deputy mayor? councillor Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I know, um, from our last, um, the last meeting, there was a question around whether or not council had had any contact from the Department of State Growth in relation to the proposed upgrades at Mornington Roundabout and, uh, the Gordon's Hill Road ramps and those proposed design works. Has council yet had any contact in respect of those?
Thank you councillor Ritchie. Uh, Mr Grant, if you could please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. No, no, we haven't.
Thank you. Thank you. councillor Mulder, please.
Mr Mayor, I have two questions. The first one relates to Bellerive Oval. I understood, uh, from, um, from the previous general manager that when it was called Blunston Arena, it always had to have the word Bellerive Oval as part of the condition on the signage. That's why it was always Blunston Oval, Bellerive, Blunston Arena, Bellerive Oval. I noticed that sort of signage is absent from Ninja.
You might have to have a notice to look at the contract councillor Mulder, but we'll come back to you. Absolutely. Thank you. Do you have a second question?
My second question, uh, Mr Mayor is, um, given your frequent and public criticisms of the government, including some comments tonight, such as hyperbo, um, such as, yeah. And given Minister Vincent's suggestion that you be more collaborative, have you been bringing your best self to the Greater Hobart City Council?
Well, ordinarily, I rule that sort of question out of order because it really is pretty base. It's, it's more about the ask for the question than the person the question is directed to. But the response to Minister Vincent, councillor Mulder, was in response to that feasibility report that you actually asked for. He came back and suggested that we ought to work more collaboratively with his department. But it's his department that actually hadn't provided us with the report. So please refrain from taking cheap potshots. It's just, it's even beneath you. councillor Hume, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first question is, uh, has the, um, CEO raised concerns with the Department of State Growth about the, the very late notice given for, um, night works on South Ham Highway? And if so, what was their response?
Thank you, CEO.
Thank you for the question through you, Mayor. Uh, no, not yet, although I have a meeting tomorrow on another matter with the Transport Commissioner, so I'll be raising it then.
I think there might be a long meeting actually.
And my second question, uh, councillors were briefed in relation to the, um, Department of State Growth's medium density guidelines. It's noted that, um, these are non-statutory and to be effective would need, um, to be, would need a, a change to the state planning provisions. Um, is there any indication that the state government is intending to change the state planning provisions to incorporate those guidelines?
Thank you. Mr Mark.
Thank you councillor Hume for the question. At this stage, no. Uh, and there would be, need to be significant amount of work to actually codify that into something which could be incorporated into the scheme. So at the moment, it's best practice guidelines that the, uh, department are asking us to promote to our general public, but I think that they're worthwhile. But I take your point and I think that would be worthwhile to be able to codify it and put it in the planning scheme as well.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. councillor James.
Thank you. Two questions. Firstly, there has been a concerted effort for save the Lindisfarne Sailing Club. It's been promoted far and wide. And my question is, um, given the Lindisfarne Sailing Club has closed for the time being, has there been any discussion in relation to a joint effort of reinstating the Lindisfarne Sailing Club and having the ferry terminal located in Lindisfarne Bay?
councillor James, you'd be aware from my diary entries, uh, last Tuesday, uh, the CEO and I met with representatives, or the commodore of the Lindisfarne Sailing Club, as well as the commodore and representative of the Bill Reeve York Club. Those discussions are ongoing. You, you're aware as our colleagues of the issues facing Lindisfarne Sailing Club and, uh, the, the ongoing viability of their, um, of the current site in Ford Parade is something that we're trying to work through with multiple stakeholders, including the state government. Um, so we'll come back to you with a, with a, um, weekly briefing report on that as discussions progress. Does that answer? Yeah, thank you.
The second question is in, in relation to pet subject, which goes back to 2017, when I opposed the Kangaroo Bay Hotel development on very good grounds, in my opinion. So the Kangaroo Bay Hotel, as I understand it, is listed into the Supreme Court at some time next month. Have some progress in relation to that or whether it has been, um, put back? You know, it hasn't actually progressed that timeline for the hearing in the Supreme Court.
I think if you question, noting this is a legal matter, uh, obviously the CEO could talk about process, but that's as far as we can go in a public forum like this. But thank you, CEO.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, through you, Mayor. The, uh, any timeframe with the Supreme Court at this point is, uh, for a directions hearing. We anticipate that once those direction hearings have occurred, uh, that we'll have a firmer, um, understanding of possible dates for the trial to be litigated.
I'll give you this, thank you.
I thought there had been a number of directions hearings and it's just the sort of norm that occurs in a relation to this particular matter because I would have thought, anyway.
So, 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 so the, the answer is yes, there had been a number of directions hearing. But for, it's not appropriate in this open forum to discuss why there's been numerous directions hearing. Needless to say, we're comfortable that things have been now progressing. So is it? Well, again, I can't comment publicly, nor can the CEO, unless there's something I should like to add, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add something. Um, through you, Mayor. Um, it's important to remember the purpose of directions hearings therefore, uh, the court to manage the litigation process. So it's not unusual for, um, a court to set a number of, um, directions hearings or subsequent directions hearings, uh, to check in with the parties about progress and if necessary, then issue orders to bring that process, uh, back on track. Um, that's simply what's been happening here.
councillor Walker, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Question is in relation to, um, delegated decisions by planning officers. Now, uh, the instances are, if you like, two or less representations or a situation where there can be multiple representations, but there's the statutory timelines. Question is, um, what is the process involved for, um, representatives to, um, get hold of the decisions, um, that have been made and the rationale for those decisions when it occurs in a delegated situation rather than before an open council?
Thank you councillor Walker. Uh, Mr Mark, please.
Through you, Mayor, and I apologize for.
I just know that you're, you're upping Mr Mark.
Thank you councillor Walker for the question. Uh, the process is, um, if I understand you correctly, is, um, given the council, uh, sorry, council officers, namely myself, has delegation, um, to deal with the matter if we have provided best efforts to secure an extension of time for the matter to go to an next meeting and have been rejected by the applicant, which in the case of, uh, the matter I believe councillor Walker is referring to, uh, has occurred. Normally councils delegated reports are not, um, publicly provided. A, a rightful information request would, uh, no doubt elucidate that. Or if the matter is appealed and, and then that matter at the direction of the tribunal is provided to all parties along with all other documentation. Uh, but that's the current process.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Councillor Walker?
Yes, this is the part I'm sorry, my understanding.
No, this is your second question.
Yeah, this is my second, this is my second. So, my understanding from that is that if a decision's been made and a representative wishes to appeal it, as they're commencing that process, they'd be doing so in the absence of information of council's rationale and decision. I just want to get clarification that, um, that when they, should they choose to embark on that, which may involve, you know, getting involved, other, um, legal help, et cetera, they're not able to, when they're commencing that, understand the decision-making and, and hence understand whether it's the strength of any appeal they may wish to lodge.
Mr. Mark?
Through you, Mayor. Uh, yes, that's correct, councillor Walker, so they're not furnished automatically with a copy of the delegated report, correct?
Mr. Carr and councillor Mulder, could we keep the talk in the gallery to a minimum, please? We're still in an open council meeting. Thank you. Councillor Goine.
Um, I have two questions, but if I could also, uh, take a bit of liberty, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank, um, council and colleagues for the flowers that you sent three weeks ago today when I had a sudden passing of a media family member. Um, and I want to thank the room for those, it meant a lot. Um, I have a question in regards to the copying, refuse, disposal site question I asked on the 17th of March and the answer provided, which says that whilst landfilling organic material is a last resort for the waste hierarchy, it is sometimes necessary when other forms of disposal are unavailable. We work closely with the aquaculture industry to ensure that isolated disposal events are managed in a safe and environmentally responsible manner in full compliance with the licence conditions and regulated by the EPA. Is it possible to seek some data on how many times we have had this last resort in the waste hierarchy occur in the last 12 months?
Mr. Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll take that one on notice and we'll provide what we can, information we can.
Councillor Goine.
Um, my next question, um, relates to a decade-long, um, awaiting reconstruction of Harmony Lane. Um, the mayor himself received a response on the 1st of April in regards to that, and I do believe that it is being considered for budget in the 26, 27 capital budget. Um, given the state of that road that I had to trespass, hmm? Yeah, that one. Traverse. It was actually more likely traversing. It was like mountain climbing, um, to get across the road the other week to do some voting. Um, do we have any interim measures in place before we have the concept and the visuals and the beautification of the road to make it a little bit more safe?
Councillor Goine, um, Mr. Graham and I met with the acting principal as well as, uh, the president of SAPRA, uh, a number of weeks ago now. Uh, there's also been some written communications going out to, uh, the parents, well, the, the school newsletter as well as the SAPRA newsletter. Uh, i- in short, it's more complicated than it looks, uh, in that there's been, there's encroachment onto public land by a number of the residents there. So, clearly, there's a consultative piece that needs to be undertaken. Um, everyone wants the best outcome there, as well as access, uh, you know, particular market days as well to, to utilise Harmony Lane as a potential exit there. Um, but it is a, a work in progress. Uh, Mr. Graham, is there anything else you'd like to, uh, add, please?
Yeah, answered very well, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I mean, there's tree roots, which has caused some areas of the road to raise, but we don't want to damage the trees in doing, you know, significant, um, road maintenance works unless we absolutely have to. Uh, I'll have our team have a, uh, inspection and just see if there's any immediate minor maintenance work that is actually required.
Thank you. We, we have seen an arborist there, so the trees have been, have been checked, and, uh, clearly as well, there's, um, yeah, for school buses, the smaller ones are fine, but when you go over, uh, also to go over the 22-plus seaters, they then need turning circles that are safe. Um, but as we know, you know, when there is rain, there hasn't been a great deal this, this year, but this time last year, it was quagmire. So, we are wanting to, to do what we can there. Um, but the design work will take some time. It's likely to be this time next year that the work actually begins, or, yeah, in the next financial year. But thank you for the question. Councillor Darko, councillor Warren, councillor Chong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. Um, St John's School in Richmond, and I understand a number of other schools have put requests in over some time for speed limits around schools to be reduced to 30 kilometres. And the question is what, if anything, um, council can do to help promote that and help get that to happen?
Well, your timing's perfect because the CEO's meeting with the new, uh, traffic commissioner, traffic commissioner tomorrow. So, very timely.
Slot into there.
Very subtle as always, but effective, councillor Chong. Um, thank you. Um, CEO, is there anything else? Or, Mr. Graham, anything you'd like to add to, to that?
Uh, uh, just for the, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, that we have advised council before that we, we're doing a, um, a speed, uh, limit review, um, and how we approach the Transport Commissioner, looking at significant number of roads ac- across the community, and we can certainly consider this information. Um, first of all, we're preparing a summary of information to go to the executive leadership team and the CEO for review before we, we then approach council at a workshop in terms of this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Councillor Kennedy. Oh, well, thank you, um, very much, colleagues. Uh, I'll call for a motion now to move into closed meeting. Please move councillor Chong's second and councillor Goine. All those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. So, thank you to those members of the public who attended in person, serving, and those also at home joining us via the live stream. Um, we'll see you back here in three weeks' time. Yeah, I think, um, the King's Birthday. Anyway, I will advise, um, but, uh, six o'clock, um, thank you very much for your company. Please end the live stream. Well, it's the 10th, isn't it? So, it'd actually be the 16th, it's a special meeting, uh, the.